All in favor? Present question, Florida Electric Light and Power Systems operating capital budget. Do we have the podium? It's in there. You don't need it?
The airfield gets hooked for me.
Okay, because we have a podium if it make you more comfortable. Okay, all right.
I'm an old Nashville guy.
Okay.
He can do about anything. So thank you all for inviting us. As you know, it's common board adjutant to do a financial report to all of our member cities. So I want to give you just a snapshot of where we are at the end of October. Fiscal year 24 budget that we've just finished working on. Some little information about our power system. There's some things that we're doing right now, this week. As you've seen, I think, in press release about CEO update. We'll talk about that for a minute. And then we'll have some questions. I'll try to have some answers. I'll leave you a lot of them in that. First of all, thank you for our board. Our board chair and his co-adjutants tonight. Wow, thank you for that guy. He has just done a phenomenal amount of work since I've been here. We just don't appreciate the calls at night, the meetings we've had, the conversations we've had. We are a big business. There's a lot of things going on and we're... We have a part-time board that makes all of our decisions for us. It just takes a lot of time and the chair has even more decision-making experience. Thank you for your interest and your time and your commitment. And I just appreciate the joy of working with you all, all these folks. Here's where we were in October '23. You know, we're about a $50 million business, give or take a few dollars. End of October, we bought about $22 million worth of power. We sold about $43 million altogether. And we've done about $5 billion in capital. That's in October '23, November, December. So we're about to close out the year. 2024 fiscal budget. You've read in the paper, you've heard us talk. Our CEO left us about four or five months ago. Also, we lost some key management people at the same time. Also, a funny thing happened in 2023. We had a lightning hit a substation. Power was out for an extended period of time. That's a couple million dollar project that we've been working on. So we took all our capital that we had for the year and earmarked it for that substation project. The other capital projects we had going on, we just sort of pushed off to the side. Because the folks, the leadership team that was driving those projects, they're not here anymore. So I've done this enough times that I've just sort of moved all this money that we were going to spend this year to next year. So if you like the budget you had this time last year, you're going to love this budget. Because it's just about dollar for dollar. Slowly but surely, we're getting projects done. I hope this time tomorrow, I'm going to push a button in a substation. I'm going to turn that new million and a half dollar transformer we bought on. So we're just that close to getting that project underway, out of the way, that we can move on to our projects for next year. So with that, operating budget looks a lot like it did. Distribution, a couple million dollars. Customer accounts, $2 million and so on, to a total of about $40 million versus $38, $39 million last year. So a little bit again to explore the inflation. Pie chart shows you the breakdown. Purchase power about 82%. Operations, 18%. Just so you know, in all the utilities I've worked for, by the way, this is about six. 80/20 is the benchmark. So you're a little better than the average. 820 is what we normally see in a utility this size. Operating expenses, you know, that's split between distribution, some transmission work and our customer accounts. And that, those numbers look about the same in all the utilities I go to. The next pie chart, general and administrative expenses. Shouldn't be a surprise. Payroll, benefits, professional services are the top three of our business expenses. And that makes sense. So capital from '23 to '24, about the same on land and building. Transmission, distribution plant, about the same. And the capital budget ends up about the same. So no surprises there. We're just going to continue finishing up what we started to do this year. Any questions or okay stuff? Financial budget projections. Total revenues, about $50 million, about $51 million. Operation and maintenance, about $40 million. Leaves us about $6, $7 million for available for construction projects. We've got about $11 million to do, or at least we think we do. And we'll pay for some of that out of the money we have. And we've got some bond money to pay for the rest. The other news, I think is really important here, is we're building a fund for our year refund. As you know, gosh, you know more about it than I do. You lived through it. I just read the reports in Nashville, the horrible ice and cold weather you had in Texas. We have a pending bill to pay for that. And we don't really know where that's going to go. But we think in the '16, '17, could be $18 million. So fortunately, our board is taking the leadership to start building a fund to help offset that expense. We now have about $12 million in that year refund. And we're going to put some more money back in it this year. The lawyers who are running that whole show now say that maybe by '26 or '27, we'll finally have it resolved. And we'll know about what that business will be. So if all goes well with this, we'll have enough money put aside in the bank to pay that bill or pretty close to that bill, whatever it comes. So congratulations for taking that vision. And every once in a while, people want to know how much debt we have. About $41, $42 million in debt. So the next page. Well, we got about $150 million for the assets. So if you got $150 million for the assets, we got about $40 million in debt. We're at about 30% in debt, so 30% in debt. So it's not so bad.
Is it closer like the other organizations you've worked for before, or do they have higher debt?
So great question. I worked for, I was CEO of utility, two utilities ago, and I paid off the last one. Okay, so that's a good figure. We were also the fastest-growing city in Tennessee. So our growth gave us lots of available cash and gave the Fed a lot of debt. I've also worked at utility, said that about 60% debt. So I don't know if that's the answer, but I think you're a great place. And I think you've got money in reserve funds that you can use to pay off debt. And you've got a lot of low-interest debt. It's hard to pay off low-interest debt. I think you're okay. And then the last of those pages is our earnings and the distribution. And so you can see this coming year, we will interject about $240,000 into the city as you're part of the Florida fund. Okay? Any questions? Basically, real quick. So I gave you a map of our system. And you can see our CDC, you can see our substations. We, we're doing about $3 million worth of work this year on our Eagle Creek Substation. That's toward the top of the page. The beginning of January, we're going to open bids for some work. We're going to start in Eagle Creek Substation. That's going to be about $2 million or so. And in the coming next five years, we have plans to do work in our other two substations. So that we can get ready for more growth, get ready for better reliability, and just make improvements that have needed to be made over the past years. So these are big, big deals. And I have some pictures of our transformer. We've just moved into our substation in Florisville. So this is one of those things you see going down the road with wheels from the front to back. It's up by the, by the school on the north side of town. It was built in Korea by Hyundai. Hyundai has a big steel plant. They build ships, they build boats, they build a lot of things. Hyundai's a major, major manufacturer in Asia. They also build power transformers. So that transformer began its life in Korea. It found its way across the Pacific, through the Panama Canal, and then up through the Caribbean and up the Galveston, Texas. And they called us and said, "Your transformers." That took about two and a half minutes. Got loaded on this truck and found its way to Florisville about a month or maybe a month and a half ago. So we had to move it in to the station. The stations are fairly small. As you go through the pictures, you can see the truck driver said, "Yeah, I can make that turn. Yeah, I can make that turn." And, "Oh, I don't think I can make that turn." That started off the event of trying to get it in the station. We had a crane. The crane company said, "Yeah, I can pick that transformer up." And then when he got there, he realized it was bigger than he really thought it was going to be. So, "Oh, I'd get a new crane." Crane also had to pick it over a building. He wasn't quite sure he knew how to do that. So that was a great fun thing to watch you pick up a million-dollar transformer over a building. And honest to goodness, within about an hour, two hours and a half, it was all over with. And we all had a sigh of relief. The crazy thing was 30 minutes after they set the transformer on the pad, the crane broke. And so we were like, men. We were lucky on this one. If that had happened 30 minutes earlier, we had a crane dangling in the middle of the air and broken. I mean, a transformer dangling in the middle of the air with a crane, a bad crane. But all went well. We got it in. And as I said, hopefully this time tomorrow, we're going to turn it off for the first of its line. You should have gotten a press release we sent out about CEO. We're really, really excited about this news. This is a guy that's been in the business a long, long time. And we think he's going to be a wonderful, wonderful addition to our company. And he'll be here about mid-January. And I'll hand off the keys and a secret whistle and all of the secrets to the utility. And he'll run it from there or something. Look forward to seeing him doing this this time next year. So any questions?
What are the bees on the map?
Huh?
One of the black bees.
What are the bees on the map? That's probably a good question. I think, I'm not sure, I don't either.
There's nothing in legend except what you have.
You know, I'm really not sure. I'm really not sure. But I bet I can find out. I bet it was from pictures. That was, that was a map we used to take pictures of the system. I bet it was some point on the ground where they took some pictures. You know, one of the questions I get asked a lot is, "How are we doing on rates? How do our rates compare to other places you've been?" And I've been to a lot of places. And my first reaction was, "Oh, I think our rates are pretty good." I think when I do the math, I think your math looks sort of like what my math looks like back in Nashville. And so it just so happened about less than a month ago, I happened to be home for a short visit. And I found my power bill on my desk at home. And I thought, "Wow, that's pretty interesting. I haven't seen that in a while." And I noticed that I paid $135 for my power bill for last October. And I had 1157 kilowatt-hours. So 1157 kilowatt-hours times all the man and all the charges. And I paid $135. And I thought, "You know what I'd do? I'd take that to Texas and I'd find out how much that's going to be." So I did that. So 1157 kilowatt-hours with all the charges and all the stuff that goes with it. Mine was 130, what did I say, 35? Here in our city, the bill would be $149. So about $15 difference between what I pay in Tennessee and what you pay here. So you know, our, our energy in Tennessee is all, a lot, a lot of it's made by hydroelectric. It's been there since the '30s. The TDA, the Tennessee Mountain Authority, built all those dams. We have a lot of hydro running. About 25% hydro, about 25% nuclear. We've got a bunch of nuclear plants. About 25% coal. Used to be coal, now it's gas, oil, gas, and about 25% of the new ones. That's how our utilities add up. And I think that you guys are doing as well here as we are doing up there. So that says a lot about the people who've been here before me, about our boards, about our employees' commitment to keeping prices low and stable. And what I haven't told you is your rates stay the same all year round. Your kilowatt-hour charge is the same. And ours in Tennessee, we have a summer rate, we have a winter rate, we have a shoulder rate, which is just kind of the year to follow. So right now, my rate's a little bit lower. But I bet you, if you call me about January, February, my rate's going to be a little higher than yours. Because we're getting into the winter months. So I just thought you'd be interested in knowing how you compare to other places I've been, other places I've lived. I think you're doing, I think you're doing a great job. I think your utilities are doing a great job. And I think our employees are doing a great job. So that's all I have to say is happy to add any comments, whatever I can answer. Brad will be happy to.
I just want to say one thing too. I want to thank Steve. I don't know if y'all will see him here again.
No.
Because we finally found a permanent replacement. But y'all heard a lot of our and we, and that his last 10 minutes. And that shows his dedication to those, even being an interim. He could have been y'all and, you know, A, a lot of times. So I just want to thank you for stepping in. Actually, what did you have, five days, four days before Mr. Crowson left? And then the next week, we lost some key management. And he called me up that next day and said, "Hey, just like you, I'm not leaving."
We don't have much.
So he, he could have been, you know, he's contracted. He could have been, "I'm not here, this is too much for me. I'm retired and everything else." And he called and said, "I'm not going anywhere. We're going to get through it." So I just want to thank him for all his, all his time, his efforts.
What he didn't tell you is, now I've been here, I'm on, I'm on call 24/7. So when something doesn't work, they're going to call me first to see. What do you think I'm doing? I'm going to push that button right there. Listen, I've taken up more than I should. Thank you very much. If you'd called me earlier, I might have had lunch or had a little. We're here to serve you. We're here to make things work well. And if you need something, please don't hesitate to give us a call.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I always say, "Stay warm," but it's always warmer. Your ongoing will be a little bit cooler.
Thank you very much.
See y'all.
Those bees, those bees instead of an arrow. That's where all the transmission and all that is. So that's what they, yeah.
On the substation.
Yeah. Instead of an arrow.
Okay, next we have the discussion of possible action on the inner local cooperation agreement for that light field use. And the school board has approved this or not yet?
Yep, y'all did have a couple of changes. They weren't, it was kind of just wording, kind of update, and then where monies would flow. And so I'm going to talk with Mr. Garza and see if they want to consider agenda next month. But they approved it with the major, or like the main updates that we made. But yeah, they approved that. But if they want to, maybe just put on a contingency, get it final, final.
We didn't really change that much. We just kind of, like you said, changed a little bit of wording, just to hopefully make it a little clearer.
They just put in some assumptions in writing. And then the big thing was to think the updating to the, if a renter asks to take down that fence in the softball field, instead of $100 to take down and put it back up by the school, we changed that to $1,000. Because it is a big, big project to take down, you know, mid-week, you put it back up, you know, two days later. So if anyone ever requested that, and we haven't had that in a long time, but if anyone requested that, we thought we needed a little more cut of money to cover that time and effort that you had back on. And then one thing was the major updates. Instead of the every update, I think that was kind of what y'all assumed from us. But let y'all know when we make major changes. One thing I wanted to ask is, one thing we talked about there last week actually, was baseball wanting to put a gate on the major baseball field dugout on the inside so that they can open that and so they can have two in and outs, you know, if they're going to bat or that type of thing. Because it just gets really crowded with, you know, 15 players in that dugout. So seeing as that constitutes y'all as a major change? Or is that something that's kind of things we can update and do as well as putting, they want to look at a fence around the bullpen to keep kids from running through? I just didn't know if y'all want to see that as, you know, on next agenda of approval? Or if that kind of falls under minor additions and updates that y'all are okay with versus, you know, take down a whole fence or expanding, you know, any areas?
I think that would be good for us to know about those kinds of, fencing especially, because then that's, I mean, I'll think about that.
Reggie can do it. The gates would be a whole lot better than trying to take a test.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I'm just saying, what I'm asking is for the information.
Okay.
That we know that you're doing.
It'd be nice to be informed.
Yeah, for that, for nothing else, just to be informed. But of course, you can work with Reggie on that.
The only deal with gates is they got to keep them up so they won't drag. Once they start dragging, they start taking them off the engine. And we got to make sure that the corners are good and solid so they won't drag. That's what happened to all those of them that were all dragging. They just took them off.
Yeah, so any of that will come up to each other. We'll talk through it, see if you can update.
Reggie could have taken us. That would be all right.
Cool.
Okay. So do you have a motion to accept this?
I have a motion to accept interim.
All in favor? Thank you. So we're, we're good to go. Thank you. Discussion of possible action on the Wissau County Sheriff Department dispatch fees. They still have not gotten back to the chief. It's a shortage. So we're going to just put that into next month. We're not going to, I don't want us to ask on it until we know exactly.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it is or what it's for.
So that's what we're going to do. And then we don't have any information on the EDC city website.
Nope. In the versus this?
Oh, okay. Okay. This is a general.
Oh, we didn't have any numbers on it. Oh, wait, there you go.
There it is.
That's it.
And so we, especially amounts, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, limit like over $3,000 we're supposed to. Not in the original. Over $3,000, I think it is. So and then, you know, is the EDC going to continue to pay for this or is the city going to pay?
I believe this is going to be the cost.
So I just need a motion to, or any questions? Do you have any more questions?
Does that seem like a reasonable compromise machine?
Everything seems so cheap in Texas compared to California. And I'd probably double it if I was in the center.
This was the cheapest one by a couple thousand dollars that we received. I think there was like four or five different quotes that we received. This company specializes in city websites.
Now, do we think, do we use their civic, it's like it's tied into some other civic plus system that we have in it?
Before the city proceeds with it, I think maybe we should keep the, or maybe if they have one, it's like, or have cities that already have a system that we can look at to make sure it's going to work.
It'd be nice if we could get a few URLs or just tell us what cities. I think you can give a list of like cities that they already have up and running.
Yeah.
Maybe you just can check them out. Because yeah, I guess they have the civics plus needs management software. Are they assuming that we're going to sign into that system too or?
So from my understanding, they, they as a company would kind of train city personnel to be able to utilize their services. So that way, they wouldn't necessarily be fully managing what is going on on the site. Or we would handle it here, but they would be there for like support. So if we are deciding on this. Yeah, yeah.
It'd be nice, I mean, sometimes we need to, I can do, I can check this friend. I like to see what their other sites.
Yeah, that would be, that's a great suggestion. You know what?
I have to get around to a partner.
Because that's all of us.
Because I thought I could just think of something or something like that.
Brandon's kind of in handling this.
Okay, so we're going to just, need a motion.
Motion table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They rescheduled the January and February meeting day due to the city holidays. Those, it's just easier to have a meeting on a day where everybody's in the office than we have to go around to the office and we have a meeting. Normally, we just move to the next week, have a week. How does that work for everybody?
We schedule that, yes, it works.
You're not quite.
I have a schedule for January.
So would that be today or either?
January 1 was, it wasn't 15.
Do what?
I was just thinking, January wasn't 15, so you're proposing it was the 22nd.
Right.
It's by the January.
There's 13.
22nd for.
Yeah.
And the 26th for February.
Right.
Oh, wow. He's managed to hit the whole of the year.
Okay, great. So I need a motion to do that.
Motion to, I motion to move the January and February meetings.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, this is, this amendment. Amendment number 33 to traffic ordinance number 01188, designated no parking zone on Griffith Street. This is that last block before the football field. Apparently, I visited with Brayton about that and wondering if we could just close that gate so that people wouldn't take advantage of parking in someone's yard, which is what they were doing. And, and so we think that there might be a fire issue as to why that gate has to be open for winter and the next season. So we're, we think that that last block from Wright Street to football field on Griffith, we would make that no parking along the street. Those house, that area was developed after the curbing was offered in. So there's not even curbs to protect her yard. People are turning around and just not to guard. After the curbing, it's because they're, they're parking there to be able to get to the gate real quick. And it's not helping, it's not right.
And especially if that's another one of the potential fire exits or places to save you.
Well, you know, cars there anyway, that's right. So that's why we would like to put no parking.
Just signs?
Signs. And then if people park there, they, there's.
The chief didn't.
The chief didn't. The chief can handle it.
You try to do curbs or do a bunch of that?
I, I don't know.
Is it just going to be a no parking or a towway zone too?
I'd make your towway zone, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
That's a good idea, Reggie.
I would do both.
That way, they, no parking, they won't care, they just get a ticket, right?
No, there is, there's...
What do you think?
Tow truck.
Just sit there, huh? Um, that's a good idea, we could, can we add that to this?
What's your opinion, Chief, on that?
I agree, I agree, I know with the football, when we added this month, uh, that people actually in our backyard, literally in our backyard, to be able to... By the time we made contact with them, they're tearing up their, their grass and everything, it's like that, so I agree a hundred percent with you.
Will Rose, with his brother, they ran over his clean house, broke it, because they were working in his yard, so...
And that's on the same street, but further down. You can't have no parking all the way down, because people park on the street.
Especially with the football, I think, whether on Griffith Street or Wright Street, uh, or that section, I mean, just people are blocking up the driveways, which is illegal. So, uh, yeah, I agree.
Can we look at...
The curbing is still going to be, um, I don't, I don't know that that's an answer, what do you think, Chief?
Keep on the yard, yes.
That curbing up there is not like our...
That person on that southern road, he gets real mad when water starts going through his yard, and that water runs off that drive, I mean, parking lot. It runs right through his, by the side of his yard, and if he puts some kind of block in there...
Yeah, it's going to be terrible.
I think just that the enforcement of no parking in that area, and possibly a tow way also, uh, and, uh, if it happens, we'll go from there.
Yeah, that's a good way to start.
Yeah.
And, you know, we talked about maybe if we could have the gate closed before the game starts, so people won't see that as, oh, I can park right here. And then once the game starts, open the gates, so that it would be an exit that people could, I mean, that's another thing we did talk about the other day.
Chief, was that you about the fire exit, or who, who told the school about needing to have two exits, was that y'all's decision?
Yeah, it was us, and then, uh, I believe the fire department also, I think.
Okay, so do you think leaving it closed till game starts would be feasible?
It, it, it would be, but in five forty-one, remember, we used to have both gates open, now it's just one little entrance.
But they're going to fix that, or it'll be two.
Yeah, so we're, we've engaged the engineering firm at the school to, the kids are going to build a new entrance off of five forty-one. But it's going to take some time, we want the kids to do it, you've got, by the time we get those drawings, get, you know, the supplies, they're in summer, so it's looking, probably next year sometime. But we're, we're working on that, but yeah, totally.
I think we, we need two gates open right now until the kids do that, because once we had it, I mean, it's, they can go north and south.
Well, and, you know, in our conversation, Bradie pointed out, it's not just varsity games, you know, there's junior high or junior high games, Thursdays and Fridays. So you've got more than just five home games.
It's got to have entrance and exit to both end?
Well, if we have...
Or we can have two on one side?
We could have two on one side maybe, but right now, we only have one on one side.
You couldn't just make that one an exit on for after the game?
So what we use...
That's not how people park, people take advantage of it.
It's what we use, after the games, we block it off right there with, uh, right there in the corner, so whatever's, whoever's parked by the west half, they go out that way. Whoever's parked in the parking lot will go out to Griffith Street and Wright Street. And then, once everything's clear, we'll open up both sides, and this is whatever way you want to block. And that's where we see it a lot better, a lot faster for the, uh...
But so, so in the meanwhile, what a fixed, part of the problem is to put this one side. So I need a motion, so we'll add the tow way to it. You said...
The addition of the tow way thing.
Okay. All in favor? Great. Okay, so, I mean, the next one is ordinance number one-two-one-eight-two-three, repealing curfew ordinance number zero-seven-one-seven-nine-five. That was, that came down from the legislature, and so we don't have...
And we can talk about that last choice.
So now it's on the agenda, so...
They don't want votes, it's mandatory, isn't it?
Well, we still got to repeal the ordinance that we have.
We have to repeal our...
This came from me, we didn't make it up.
Well, I'll move that we accept this ordinance, if we defy the state's law.
Okay. All in favor? Well, is that your vote, no?
Yes, no, I think, I think it makes a difference.
Okay, city reports, we have tax report. Great, we have police department.
Good evening, Mayor Council. For the month of November, we had a total of thirty-one calls for service. Uh, we've driven on the new system, our spill net traffic enforcement, we've invented a hundred and twenty traffic stops. Uh, one hundred and fourteen citations were issued, and thirties, uh, warnings were issued. Non-traffic, we had a total of forty reminders in the back bowl, and one professional... We did not have any city ordinance violations, uh, we sent a hundred and eighteen citations to the municipal for it. We had a total of one city ordinance violation, was just basically a complaint about a dog, which we're implying. And second page for your incidents of arrest, we had four arrests for the month of November. Two for warrant service, one for resisting arrest, and one for driving while racing to Cali. And then we have the other incident of...
Do I have any questions, Reggie?
Open the door, yeah, give it up.
Thank you.
Are we fully staffed now? Please press fully staffed.
Yes, this is, yes.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for our Christmas gift and our beautiful art and this great meal, thank you so much. Um, if you look on the last page, it gives you the totals. Uh, this is from November, the total, uh, brought in was ten thousand five seventy-five point ninety, and the, um, part that the city kept, five thousand ninety-six, and by the state, five thousand four seventy-nine. Um, we're doing a lot better, um, with more officers, more citations, more law enforcement, I think it's really helping tremendously. And we've had so many people coming in to actually pay their tickets. A lot of people still just go online and take care of it with their debit or credit card, but a lot of people are coming in and asking for explanations. And so I generally have, have the tables are set up, I'll sit down with them, and we'll talk about the Sixth Amendment, we'll talk about what is, what are the pleas, guilty, not guilty, no contest. It's amazing how many people just don't know what no contest means, or no locandere, as this is written on our thing. So I've really enjoyed having the opportunity to work especially with the young people, as their parents come in, we sit down, and I tell them how fortunate they are to have a parent that will come in with them, and it's very encouraging. I think that the word's kind of getting out to high school and so forth, that, oh, it's not so bad, it's not so terrible, you're not going to go to jail promptly. So I think it's going really, really well, we've had a lot of good, um, comments from different people. I hope y'all are hearing the same, if not, please let me know. Um, I spoke with the mayor, um, last week about, uh, an audit that's been taken place. We have preliminary results from the comptroller's office, but we won't have the final results until January or February. And so we've been in communication with them. Also, um, the chief was saying that we're open only one day a week, Thursdays, from nine AM to five PM. And we have pre-trial, which is when people come in to contest their ticket, they want to visit with the, um, city attorney, I was going to say county attorney, city attorney, who usually is Valerie Elizondo, she comes every other month. And I know that's an expense to the city, I was looking at our budget, and I don't know exactly which line that is, but I know it's, it is, it's not cheap to have them come down. And she's usually here for two or three hours. And so, it was suggested that maybe instead of every other month, we might consider doing once a month again, uh, the pre-trials. At this point, I think we're okay. Last month, this whole area was completely full of people, and we start at nine AM, and we finish usually between ten-thirty and eleven AM. I believe we had like thirty people here to visit with the, um, city attorney. And she does an excellent job, she gets them in quick, and if they have requested a video, then the chief offers the video, and everything goes like clockwork. My clerk has everything lined up, and it's just works beautifully. But it does get very crowded in here, and so that's a concern. So I'm not saying that we need to do it yet, but we might need to consider that, because we have a higher volume of, of citations, so we're going to have a higher volume of people that are wanting to contest that. I think that's it. Do y'all have any questions?
We did, I did speak with Jamie about asking, telling people, or they're saying that they're going to come for court, or whatever, to ask them to park back behind city hall. Because it just, that, they, downtown was just packed, stores, you know, were in holiday mode, and it was kind of a challenge. So I did ask her that wherever y'all are, they're lining up with you, please have them park back here.
Yes, and when you think about signage as well, I know there's those big, um, like, the tables are made out of that big white plastic. Maybe we can have some signs set out for pre-trial dates only, if you are here for pre-trial, point of director, please park behind that. I think that would relieve some of the congestion up front.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? Thank you very much. So I see that, um, we also have the waterworks report, uh, racist, did you see it? Saw it? They sent it to you? A great call, I mean, you'd like...
There's one or two things that I need to discuss, but most of it is, yeah, I still need to discuss some stuff.
Okay.
And I need to get Travis in here too.
Okay.
We'll need both of y'all together.
All right, we'll get on any, then we'll sure do that.
Just have a good time.
Right. You know, we're, um, very short-lived again. Uh, James is leading, and, uh, we have Clarence and Reggie, and Angela. But, um, there we are. We have put out a, um, notice on Indeed, to see if we can get some employee options. We hadn't used that, we had some success with it, so we're trying. Do you have any questions, Reggie?
I don't do any of that.
Just bear with me, if y'all got a good lead, it's going to take a little bit to get, if it's a little, get hold of something, but it may not be that, that one day or the next day, but it's, it's soon enough.
And we're also using Leon and his crew, and Rodney and his group, because we just counted.
But those are just using on the major, like, things like that, only on their own right street.
I appreciate that. But, I mean, this sounds crazy, but because we have fewer employees, we do have money in the budget to be able to bring in these people to help Reggie, so they not just drown. And that wasn't a, it was a, I mean it on purpose, it's just too much, it's a lot, a lot, a lot.
I mean, I'm still fixing some pride, you know, maybe.
Right. But we are sending them bills for that.
I've got a list that looks and technically, so, all right, well, keep it looking. Because they're, they're starting to come up later and later on.
Yeah.
You know, later, and they're just constantly sore ones.
Right. Takes a longer time for them to show up. Um, Dean, you want to say something?
Okay, uh, the, uh, plan for the website, right now, I'm going through a process with TCQ for, for emergency management plan. And one of the things that they're supposed to do, to do is provide, not only to TCQ, but to community, emergency contacts. And, um, gathering that information, however, I provided a lot of it, that that might be a very good place to put it, so on the website.
Absolutely.
And everybody goes to, who I didn't have, who I didn't do, I taught, and TCQ would like to, to know that this is... So I'd like to propose that whenever, whoever's developing this, and I'll provide them that report, and they can just basically just copy and paste it, or fix it up however they want.
I really like it that when we're on the EDC and you're on the TC, so we have a direct person to go back to the EDC, take our stuff and bring stuff, and that, I like that a lot.
We just keep the...
Yes, sir, sure. That's good. Rob, anything else? All right. We're adjourned, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We're coming tonight, please take care of yourselves.
I'll take some teaser.
That's right.